Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30. We can call the meeting ordered. If you'd please rise and join me to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
Thank you. Okay. We have our list. Oh, thank you. Okay. First on our agenda is communications from parents, staff, and district residents. A little blurb to read everyone before we go down the road. The Kennewick School District Board of Directors appreciates hearing from the community. At regular board business meetings, the Board of Directors provides an opportunity for communications from parents, staff, and district residents. This time is reserved during the working meeting for the Board to hear from... Sorry. The time is reserved during the working meeting for the Board to listen to comments, input, and information. The Board does not respond to comments provided as the goal is to listen and to learn. Please know that the Board's silence is neutral. It is neither a signal or agreement or misagreement with the speaker's remarks. As appropriate, the Board will ask the superintendent and her staff to look into any issues raised. Please note for all community members to feel welcome and safe during the Board's business meeting. The Board does not take public comments on issues relating to personnel, individually named staff members at board meetings. However, you can email the Board with any such comments. And finally, please remember that your words have impact, and you, not the school district, are responsible for your words. We caution all speakers that it is possible that your statements could violate the rights of others or violate... Excuse me. Violate the rights of others under various laws, including laws protecting privacy and laws prohibiting defamation. If you are unsure of any legal effects on your remarks, you should seek independent legal counsel. In any case, we ask you help... We ask that you help us model for our students what a respectful and inclusive community looks like and sounds. Okay. Our first speaker is Lona Hammer. Did I pronounce that correctly? Lona, I apologize.
Good afternoon.
Hello?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Might want to pull that mic.
If you'll stand closer to the mic.
It's right on the corner there. This will work. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Is that better?
Much.
Good afternoon. I'm a little nervous, as you can tell. I'm Lona Hammer from the Kennewick Housing Authority, and I wanted to explain a new project that we are planning for the 10th and Gum Street in Kennewick, which will bring more density to that area. We're planning a 58-unit affordable housing project. Thirty percent of the families, 50% of the families who live there will be at 30% area median income. 50% will be at 50% area median income. So really, a need for those families who are now at risk of losing housing and slipping into homelessness. We anticipate that families will likely already be in the Kennewick School District. So these are kiddos you're already serving. They may be at a different school than they are now. So you may see a bit of influx in the community school near that site. Most of the units are... There are going to be 28 one-bedroom units, 23 two-bedroom units, and only seven three-bedroom units. In terms of our assessment of needs, the ones and two-bedrooms are the most needed by the community that we have previously served. We'll have set of sites for veterans within this project, five units, and 10 or more units for persons with disabilities in this. And this could be a single person with disabilities or a family that includes a person with disabilities. So there's a potential for a number of children at this unit. We will have a playground there. There will be garden space. There will be space to meet with a counselor or a service coordinator or someone in case of someone who needs a little extra support there. They'll have access to the Family Self-Sufficiency Program to be able to build escrow and move on to using that escrow for their education or buying a home eventually. So there'll be some opportunity for self-sufficiency activities here.
Ms. Hammer, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your time's expired.
Oh.
But thank you very much for sharing with us.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Our next speaker is Sterling Byde.
Hi, I'm Sterling Byde, and I'm in 7th grade, and I'm attending Schnick Middle School. My ELD teacher is Mr. Bontem, and we've been reading a couple of books in our class and asked, wondering if we could propose a change in policies regarding PG-13 movies being shot in middle school. Other districts in our area allow PG-13 movies with parent permission. However, KSD does not. We trust the judgment of our teachers and our parents and feel like policy could be adjusted in a way that makes sense if the students, parents, teachers, and the community. Me and my classmates would like to know how we can get this policy reconfirmed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sterling. You did great. Okay. That is all of our speakers.
If the Board's open to it, can we have Dr. Pierce just look into some of the neighboring policies on that and confirm PG-13 movies? I know we just went through and did this policy, but I'd be interested to know if the other districts are there.
Didn't we do that?
Yeah.
So the Board recently updated the policy to allow PG movies in grades 3 through 12, and the policy allows PG-13 movies in grades 9 through 12. So that's what the current policy says. So I'm happy to look at what some other neighboring districts do and report back to the Board.
And that's with parental consent, right?
Correct. Our policy says that all movies require parent permission.
Thank you very much. Okay. So... Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, online. Do we have you online? Okay. Perfect. Excellent. Thank you very much. My glasses just broke. Brilliant. All right. That's a problem. Okay. I have another pair. Okay. So next on the agenda is consent items.
I move to approve consent items as written.
Second.
Okay. I have a first and a second. Any questions or comments? If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvit?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We're up for superintendent and Board member reports. Dr. Pierce?
Great. Thank you. Just a couple of items. One, I wanted to share that on October 6th, we had 51 KSD students attend the Somos Latinos CBC LULAC Student Conference. And this conference is sponsored each year by LULAC, which is the League of United Latin American Citizens Council and CBC. And it's geared toward Latino high school students who are at risk of not pursuing college education. So the students attend the conference. It's students from our district and other neighboring districts. There were three great sessions that were provided to students. One was in Spanish, and it was about college readiness. And then there were two sessions in English focused on creating impactful futures and investing in education. So the purpose is really to provide students with tools to assist them in making the transition to higher education. And the keynote speaker this year was Norma Rodriguez, who's a Benton Franklin Superior Court Judge. And so it was a great event for our students. Want to thank Gabrielle Portugal, who is the LULAC president, for providing this opportunity for our students along with CBC. And also want to thank Rhonda Pratt, who's our Director of Secondary Education, and Sarah Del Toro, who's our Director of Learning Supports and Programs. They helped to coordinate all the logistics, help recruit the students, make sure they were provided with transportation. So it's just one of our great focus. And we've got some other career and college fairs coming up, so I wanted to mention that. And then just a real quick shout out to the schools that I've visited since the last board meeting. So the Board knows that I do some formal visits to schools where I get into classrooms and meet with the principal to look at data and, you know, hear about what's going well, what the strengths are, what the challenges are in the schools. I've been out to Washington, Vista, Sage Crest, Kennewick High School, Amistad, Sunset View, MCP, and Horse Heaven Hills over the past couple of weeks. And I just want to commend the staff for the great work that's going on. I've been to a lot of classrooms. We've got lots of great student engagement and high-quality instruction and just principals and staff working really hard for our students.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right. So we did have a student advisory meeting today, which we had a presentation from Nutrition Services. So nothing too crazy. They just... They fed us a meal and with some new foods that they might want to try out. And we all gave our feedback on that. And then we all just gave our feedback on just general questions about the school lunches and breakfasts that were being served every day and things that we'd want to see changed, things that we really like. And they got a lot of good feedback, I think, from all of us to implement. Something that I'll give an update on would be last week I talked about pursuing the See Something, Say Something system that Southridge has implemented the last year. So just with some further discussion with Mrs. or Dr. Pierce. We... So when a student reports something in the See Something, Say Something, it is going to... They are directed to a page that is actually on KSD's website where anyone can actually report. It's just on the website for parents, students, staff, anyone to report anything. It can also be anonymous. And so that's where that's directed, which is something that I learned. And so in the future, as I'm pursuing this, I'm looking to get this in every school. So Southridge has it so that a student can go up to one of their posters and it takes them to the... It has a QR code. It takes them to there. So we're looking at having possibly someone in the district like Communications working with them to make some kind of flyer that we can put up in all the schools, have them in bathrooms, things like that, so that it's just more accessible to students because from looking at it on the website, it is available on the website, although you kind of have to dig for it a little bit. It's not something that a student might just find super easy. And I just want to look into getting that changed. Another thing would be that the form for the students to report something, when it comes to younger students, like for example, a 6th grader, it's pretty wordy and it's a little bit difficult to find, like where exactly the link is to report something. And then when you get on the actual form, it's just kind of a lot for a 6th grader maybe to do on their own if they didn't have a parent to help them with it. So we're looking at possibly making the form a version for adults or parents and then a version for students that's a little bit more accessible to them so that they can report something easier. So that's something that I'm working on, and that's about it.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Okay. Just real quick. On the 29th, I met with Dr. Pierce and Lexi, our Director of Special Services, and just trying to learn more about that whole department in general and just get a better understanding of it. So it was a very informative meeting. Learned a lot. It was part of my follow-up discussion that I had with a principal the previous week. And so I'm just trying to learn more about that. And that's it. Thank you.
Micah?
Yeah. So I worked on some policies, just kind of looked at some different policies and kind of worked on some wording and stuff that I'd like to present to the Board a little bit later as I kind of work through them, some updates potentially. Visit a lot of games, try to support the student athletes as much as I can. I actually... There was actually a... Some supposed to be debates, I guess, but ended up being interviews for school board potential candidates. So I watched those. Those are very interesting to see kind of what their thoughts and ideas were. Volunteered with a bunch of local youth and did some projects with some local youth. And I filled several other calls, there's various calls about issues and stuff. And so, I mean, it seems like it's always a busy couple days, you know? Every day seems like there's something. So just doing normal work.
Perfect. Thank you. Diane?
So I met with two individuals separately, community members, who just had some questions about different things, not complaints. They just had questions about the district. And I met with a businessperson in town who had some financial questions that I am not competent to answer. And so Vic, I don't know if you got a phone call from a person, but I gave them all your information, so hopefully they'll be contacting you. It was mostly about... Because of the increased assessed valuation of properties and some concerns that business people have and individuals, just personal real estate. So they wanted to know, you know, how that would affect the district. And I think then there were questions then about levies and bonds and how that all works. So Vic's the guy for that. And then the racial equity and social justice meeting was on Monday, and I was lucky enough to watch Dr. Pierce's interview on NBC Right Now. It was great. You did a great job, and I was very proud because you talked about our new security officers and how, you know, that's an important thing for us and other good things, too. But I thought all three of the superintendents in the area have done it, and I thought you did a great job. Well, I do think she's... You and Ms. Whitney are a little perkier, I think, and so both of you did a great job. So did Dr. Reddinger. So thanks for being out there in the community. I know you like to be in our schools, but I like it when you're out there with our other community people, too.
Thank you. Ron?
I have two questions and a comment. Is that okay? Is that acceptable?
Sure.
All right. Have a question for you. With that concern, pardon me for not knowing, but do we have drop boxes at the schools that, hey, we don't have to fill the form out online? If we have a concern, we can fill it out. No one's around. I can drop it in the box and have someone contact me. That way, is that available at the schools?
That is something I'm not sure for every school, but Kennewick has one. I've heard of that.
Could I challenge you to give your assignment? So bold to give your assignment and see what the students would think of that? Is that something Tracy that you think is feasible?
Yeah. I think we can ask the superintendent Student Advisory Council their thoughts on that. I'm sure.
I know sometimes counselors have things like that outside their doors, but it's not everywhere, maybe.
And I purposely don't want it at the council.
Why, no.
Because that puts a stigma on the kid that's dropping it off. I want it just to be industry so they can drop it off and not be saying you're going to see the council or something like that. Okay. The other thing, Micah, you mentioned... Thank you, if you would. Micah, if you would, could you tell me where do you see the debates? I cannot find where to attend the debates of the candidates.
It was online on Facebook, and then I guess...
Facebook.
Yeah.
The League of Women Voters.
No, no. I wanted one that you can interact with. You can ask even the questions.
Oh, it wasn't...
Remember when you ran to... Maybe it was already...
Yes. So there was the League of Women Voters and there's the Tracy here. But those aren't really debates. Those are just like a really brief Q and A. I mean, it's...
We used to do... Well, no, you're right.
Yeah. It's like a minute each. Yeah. It's like a minute each, almost like a quick...
So is that happening still?
Yes, that is happening. Yeah.
Is it gonna happen in the future?
Yeah. So I think Mike, maybe Mike, I don't know if he's done it or his or not, but I think they're in it right now. I mean, they're in the middle of...
You know what? Not to interrupt you, but I remember being able to ask you a question and people would write their questions down. And then the moderator would go through and ask those questions.
We did them in person.
That was when you did the League, I think probably the League of Women's. They're interviewing now.
That's too bad.
It is too bad. I know. They don't really have anything that Tracy does that really has a good...
Where you can ask the questions.
Yeah. We're trying to make something like that.
And lastly, my statement is that I went to... I attended the best football game that I've ever attended. Kennewick versus Richland. That was crazy, guys. That was crazy good.
Hook and ladder.
We... Yes. If you ever need to attend a game and support the kids, I'm telling you, they're playing some great sports. And it's not just football. Volleyball is outstanding also. Get out and support these kids. It's a cheap entertainment, and if you didn't walk away Friday from that game enjoying football, you can't. You can't enjoy football because that was the best I've seen. Pros, high school, college, it was an outstanding game. You know, I just wanted to share. And Kennewick won, by the way.
Do you want to say... Do you want to tell them how they won? It's pretty cool.
You said it. Hook and ladder.
Hook and ladder, being at the last, like, eight. It was amazing.
The game went back and forth, back and forth. Was it 20 seconds left? Hook and ladder?
I think less than that. I think they scored with like seven, eight seconds left. Yeah.
Yeah. It was amazing. Okay. I'm gonna share. It was amazing because I was sitting on the Richland side with some friends that were really making fun of me because they thought that last score was the end of the game.
Even better.
Yeah. So anyway.
Well, on that note, I will be attending a, Micah, volleyball game tomorrow night. One of my additional daughters, I should say, is on the varsity, and they're having a great year, so I'm gonna go support her team tomorrow. I've been remiss in doing that, so I'm very excited to go watch her play. Other than that, this week I had a chance to meet with Mr. Griffith from Southridge. Had a very nice conversation with him, going through some of the challenges he's facing. And I think he's... I was impressed with his vision and his commitment to getting some things that I think might have fallen through the cracks along the way. And so he seemed very committed to getting stuff right. So it was a very productive meeting. Really glad you got to spend the time. So it was... Time lost, man. Okay. So we are done with our reports. Next up, let me rephrase. We're done with our Board member reports. Next is reports and discussions. First up is district performance indicators and targets. Dr. Pierce?
Okay. about our current district performance indicators and targets. And I was able to get a lot of good consensus feedback, I feel, from the Board on a direction moving forward. So we have adopted for the year our annual objectives. Those are set and Board approved. And of course, our mission, vision, and strategic goals remain the same. But last spring, the Board identified a desire to take a look at those performance indicators and targets that are tied to our goals. So that's what you did at the last study session, was do that review. You approved the strategic objectives on September 13th. You discussed the updates to the performance indicators and targets on the 27th. And then I sent to you a draft revision of that document based on Board feedback. So I'm here tonight to present that to you for approval, and then we'll publish a full update of the strategic plan for 2324. So you have the whole version of this, and I'll just put it up on the screen. But based on Board feedback, these are the major changes. The document still has the same focus areas for each goal, but we've separated the indicator from the target just to make it a little bit clearer. For all of the indicators, like this first one, where we look at the percent of students responding to in the survey that reporting that they feel safe, included, and welcomed at school on the annual student survey, that's the indicator. And for all of those survey-related indicators, we've maintained the target at 90% or more. And the other thing that you'll see is on the results, we had a conversation, if you recall, about the COVID data and the COVID years. And there were times where the data just said not available because of COVID, and it's sort of confusing. So really kind of refreshing and starting with current year 23... Excuse me. 2223, which was actually last year, as our kind of baseline data point, and then having the targets build from there. So you'll see on the targets that are tied to a survey question, those like qualitative data targets, they're all set at 90% because we're close to reaching that 90% in most cases. I'll just highlight a couple more areas. I know you've had a chance to look at this. One of the things you asked is for this qualitative data target connected to our goal of all students are ready for their future, to separate out what students are reporting, what families and staff are reporting. Someone looking at that data, you can see that our students are saying it less. The 78% are reporting that they have the opportunities to learn digital citizenship, social life, and employment skills that are found in our learner profile, whereas families and staff are reporting 88%. So it's informative for us to look at the difference between what our students are saying, what our staff are saying, and what our families are saying. So that's a change. And then for the most part on the academic indicators tied to our goal for all students to be engaged learners, we've set those at increasing by 3% or more each year. So you'll see, like you saw the last draft, where all the indicators tied to a level, like elementary, show up on one page. And we're really looking at instead of setting... There's some conversation if the targets were set, you know, too aggressively based on where our current data was, that like a reasonable way to look at this would be to expect increases each year, to expect continuous growth, and like over the next four years, you know, looking at like a 12% increase. Over the next five years, looking at a 15% increase. And also, I think this helps with our schools setting their targets because everybody can grow, right? So if we set a target at 65% or something like that, sometimes it's a little challenging for schools to know how to interpret that if they're above that target or below that target. Because of course, we're looking at the district average. So having the percent increase is a logical way. And that was, I felt I heard the Board having that conversation at the study session. So you'll see that for all of the academic targets, including graduation. We set the graduation at 1%, given that we're already at 87%. So when we're at a high, you know, target, if we set it at 3%, you know, we'd be like exceeding 100% in the next couple of years, and that might not be a very, you know, realistic target. Obviously, our goal, and I always like to say this, our goal is still 100%. Our goal is for every student, all students. But when we set our targets, right, we look at where we are currently performing and how can we increase over time? And that was a conversation that the Board had as well. So then when you look at the final three goals, all families are key partners, I realized on this version, I accidentally left off the staff goal. And so just the label here, that this is our staff-focused goal for our staff to be safe, respected, valued professionals. And then this is our community goal and our district goal. We talked about taking off some of those things that were just like sort of checkmarks. So you'll see those are gone. And then I did... We reframed the staff diversity target a little bit based on the conversation. The indicator is still the percentage of district staff diversity compared to overall community diversity. Because we had that conversation. That's what we're striving for, ensuring that our staff and our schools reflect the greater diversity of the community. And so when we look at the difference right now between when you look at community diversity and district staff diversity, there's like a 16% gap. So this would target is to decrease that gap by 2% a year over the next four years. And then we'd be able to see, you know, what progress have we made and how do we continue to progress to make that gap less? Again, still always focused on... Again, still always focused on hiring, uh, the most qualified and best person for the job. So those are kind of the big highlights, uh, reflecting what I believe you all talked about in the study session, and hopefully you had a chance to look at this before tonight, but, um, I'm bringing it to you tonight for your approval.
Questions?
Yeah, I, I, um, Dr. Pierce, on page four, at the very top, uh, the very first section, there's those kind of like the weird, I don't know, I say weird numbers, but like, what are, what are those numbers? Am I, I'm just confused. It's like, what's point one-three?
Yeah. And so that, those targets are the same. I just had to, um, I mean, the indicator is the same as it, as it is currently. So one thing we look at, especially at, especially starting high school, not that we don't look at grades all throughout the system, but at high school, it's critically important because you need to have a passing grade in order to earn credit, and you need to earn credit in order to graduate. So we look at, when we look at on-track for graduation, we look at passing grades and credit acquisition. And so the indicator is the percentage of students who, the percent increase of students, and maybe I need to think about how I worded this to make it clear, but what we're looking at is wanting to have the percentage of students who are passing their classes increase by three percent when you compare first semester to second semester. So when we did that for last year, because that really is the same as it is, it was two percent in the pre, in the current version.
Yeah.
We just increased it to three percent. But in some cases, like for our ninth graders, we actually saw fewer students, uh, passing classes second semester compared to first semester. So that's why it's a negative percentage. We want these to be positive percentages, and our target is to increase three percent. Because our high schools do a lot of intervention. They do a lot of grade tracking and looking at, you know, who's, who's not passing classes first semester and try to do interventions to help those kids get their grades up and passing into second semester. But you can see that, you know, we've got some work to do there.
Okay. Yeah, just through, all the other ones were like sixties and fifty numbers, and the, that one was just different numbers.
Yeah.
I, I gotta know.
Yeah. So if we were make, meeting our target, these numbers would be three percent.
Yeah. Gotcha. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? So do we need to make a proposal? All right, so we need a motion to approve, uh, the, what are we calling this? The?
Performance indicators.
Performance indicators.
indicators and targets.
Can I, can I throw one more thing out there? Sorry.
Is, is this on the calendar then for year, just yearly review then, going forward?
Yeah, that was something that I, uh, that the board talked about. It's just, it's not reflected on this document, but that, that, that would, um, you know, this process would happen like every August or probably in August instead of September, but, um, to say, okay, what, where are we? And then, does anything need to be adjusted?
Perfect.
So I'll move to approve the performance indicators and targets as presented. First, first and second read.
I'll second.
First and second. Do we have any other comments or discussion? If not, I will call for the roll call vote, please.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvit?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
And Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, Mr. Roberts will be presenting the enrollment update.
All right, the first slide here gives a little bit of the trend over the last four or five years, and so you can see elementary here. So this is September, and normally September's, uh, not the, the best month. We get a little better numbers in October. And, um, you know, the budget is an average for the year. So for elementary, we expect eight thousand one seventy-one average over the year. Uh, September is eighty-one, twenty-two. So the enrollment should go up in the elementary. Um, we had a few schools where they were still trying to get paperwork in. So I think this is already up to about eighty-one, fifty, hopefully. So we should come in about eighty-one, seventy-one, hopefully, right around there. And, uh, middle school's pretty much tracking there with budget, a, a little higher than last year. But we did have a large fifth grade class going into, uh, sixth grade here, uh, from the June to, to September. So that's most of that increase, the right at budget. And then high school, um, quite a bit higher than budget, but then again, usually that peaks, uh, in the fall, and then it declines. We usually lose about a hundred and fifty kids, high school. Uh, so this will probably end up close to budget, maybe a little over. Endeavor and Legacy, uh, down a little bit below budget, and they usually pick up more kids, kind of get into that program, into that school online as we get through, uh, the next three or four months. So hopefully that'll get a little closer to budget over the year. And then, uh, Tri-Tech, down a little bit from budget, um, so normally that stays pretty close. Overall, um, eighteen thousand one seventy-nine student FTE compared to the budget. Uh, we lose some high school, maybe gain a little elementary. We should come in, hopefully, you know, right around budget, which is, um, that's good news. We like to be over budget, um, but definitely, uh, good news to be close to budget and, you know, not under there. So, you get another update in December. We'll have another update on the road. Is there any questions there on that first slide? We'll get into a few other ones.
So, quick question. I, how do you guys estimate kindergarten enrollments? I've nev, I've never understood that. Is that just, is there tea leaves involved?
Um, let's see, if there's another, uh, next slide. So we're, kindergarten enrollment's not quite, uh, it was budgeted at twelve seventy, we're at eleven ninety-one. Um, we think it's probably, given the, the elementaries that I looked at today, where we had the ones, elementary, that, uh, didn't have the paperwork in, it's probably around twelve hundred right now. So, uh, we look at, uh, the birth, uh, in the county, in the city, uh, tri-city hospitals, and, um, the trend from before when we had the birth rates, um, and just trying to do the best we can. So we, we haven't been budgeting very aggressively. Um, so this is down, you know, this is probably, um, the most discouraging number in all the budget is the kindergartens below where we're at. You can see here, this is kindergarten trend, head count, and this is actually supposed to be September. I don't know why this chart put in January, but this is September two thousand and ten, and here's September twenty-twenty-three. So, you know, it has been a little bit trending down a little bit. Twelve sixty-six was last year, and we budgeted about the same. Um, and maybe we'll get there. We'll see. So the kindergarten's a tough one to try to.
No, and, and that's fine. I just, only because I know you've got such deep data on, you know, we know the kids. We have, you have a very good learning curve of, of who's coming back each year, but the kindergarten is just always a.
Yeah. And, uh.
Guessing game.
And then the state, you know, they come out with a lot of information about birth rates, you know. You've probably read some of that through some of your materials, and, uh, I don't think Benton County has, um, as, as bad as some of the other birth rates in the state, but it's definitely, uh, tailed off a little bit last few years. And then here's, uh, June versus September to kind of see, uh, you know, the transition of, of these students. So we had fourteen, fifteen, uh, well, kindergarten twelve ninety-six, and then first grade, if you can see the, how much increase we, we, we had there, and some decrease over here, fifth to sixth, sixth to seventh, and so on. But overall, these numbers here, about eighty kids, uh, we budgeted for increase, and we, we, it's about eighty kids, actually. I guess about eighty-four, and the budget was about seventy-six. So, so that's good. See, here in sixth grade, we don't budget, uh, very much increase here. This is looking at the past ten years, basically, to get these numbers, and we usually try to go pretty conservative. So we'll look at, like I said, the last five to ten years, uh, more emphasis on the last three to four years, and then say, you know, if that looks like, you know, we're not growing, we'll budget zero increase from fifth to sixth, and so on. Usually a little better increase here, uh, kindergarten to first. So we budgeted twenty-eight, and we got thirty-six.
So are we, are we looking, I mean, I know this is looking probably a little bit further than what you've got presented, but so are we expecting an even lower kindergarten class potentially next year than the eleven ninety-one? Or you think it's going to be about the same, or?
Uh, we probably would not budget any more than eleven ninety-one.
Yeah.
Um, normally, you know, we try to stick close to at least what we had the prior year to not get into trouble. I mean, we'd still look at the numbers, but it'd be hard to, to probably go any higher than that. And I've looked at some of the, the numbers from the birth, and it doesn't look like, you know, I think the, the, this should have been higher based on the birth rates that, that I saw four or five years ago, and it just wasn't. So I can't rely on that as much as before.
Yeah.
Did state funding for the FTEs are based on your estimate or actuals?
They're based on the actuals.
Actuals.
So, yeah, we paid the budget up until January. They pay us the budget, and then January, they kind of look at the real average, and then we get adjustment.
So, where do you think these kids are? I mean, do you have a, a theory or idea?
Uh, not, you know, you can read articles. I think the state is down, you know, a certain percentage of, of kids, whether they went to private school or where they're at. I don't know, but there's been quite a bit of.
I did actually a little, little dig into this, because this is one of my biggest concerns, and it seems like these, these small private schools, these small Christian schools are like busting, 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 busting at the seams, um, to where they're expanding, and they're just like totally full. So, in a way, this is an opportunity, right? I mean, I, I always think that whenever there's competition, that people step up, and, um, so I think this is, and I think if we kind of maybe look at that, recognize that, and maybe understand why they're there, and maybe we can improve somehow and, and, um, get them back.
Birth rates also now.
Yeah.
People have a smaller family.
Just off, Chris.
Um, I don't know, and, and we could follow up and see what kind of data we can, we can get. I mean, you're gonna see in a minute some of the, uh, data we have on like declarations of intent to homeschool. Um, and we, uh, uh, many of those families are attending, uh, our parent partnership at MCP. But if they attend for part of a day at MCP and do part of a day homeschool, then they file a declaration of intent to homeschool. So those are included there. But we could look at, you know, some of the surrounding data, because I just don't, when I look at the data, I don't, I don't, I don't think that we're losing students, like that it's, it's that we're losing students. I see that students aren't enrolling, and what I don't know from the data that we have, is it because overall birth rates are down and there's just fewer students being born and coming into our system, or there's more, um, movement? You know, people have a, that, people have a, a baby, and then they move out of the area or move into the area, you know? Or are those kindergarten, like, are our local kindergarten numbers down? Or in, in our, you know, neighboring like private schools, um, are they up?
Private schools are up.
In the kindergarten?
Oh, yeah.
There, there's articles that they're, they're.
Yeah, but I mean, I'd like to look. I'm just saying, I'd, I'd like to know from our local, like, kindergartens, like our neighboring schools, what are their kindergarten classes? And are they seeing their kindergartens down too, or are they seeing a big increase while we're seeing a decrease?
They're, they're about like ours, and they're not, they're not going up.
That's what I was gonna ask. What's the neighboring?
Yeah.
Communities look like? Pascal, Richland, anything? Are they the same?
Yeah, you're not seeing any significant, similar to, to us. I'd have to go back. I, I did look at those, and, you know, they're pretty much same type of situation.
And, and so I, my, my evidence is definitely circumstantial evidence, but I can tell you that my neighborhood, I know there's like four families who all were in the Kennewick School District. They all, in the last couple of years, have left to private schools. Um, just talking to those families, um, just that's, I just, you know, just even just that, they tell me their schools are absolutely busted at the seams. They cannot take any more kids, and they never, they've never been like that before, you know? So I even talked to one of the pastors about, now, three weeks ago, and he's telling the same thing, like, his enrollment, and he can't, they can't fit any more kids, and they've never had anything like this. So I just wonder if there's three, four hundred kids there, if you space it all out, right? So, um, I'm just curious. I mean, I don't know how we could find that out, but that'd be really interesting to know.
No, I mean, actually, you can, uh, you can go to the, the elementaries and, and survey the secretaries. They're the ones who take the, the kids that basically disenroll and go to private school, so.
Yes, Dan.
And I don't, I mean, for us, having students in the school certainly is what we want, but they're in school somewhere, and that's the important thing. Um, and, you know, growing up, uh, for example, working in Spokane, there were a huge number and options of other schools rather than the public schools. And so we here did not have a lot of options at one time, and now we do have more options. So families do have opportunities to choose things that may match their family, you know? And so I'm not, I don't see it as a, necessarily a bad thing. It's just there are more opportunities and, and something that we need to be looking at, as you are doing very well, to make sure that, uh, we budget for the changes. But, you know, I think that families have more opportunities, and that's a good thing.
I agree with you, Diane. I think it's a really good thing. Increase competition, right? And that makes everybody.
I don't think it's competition. I just think it's, we have lots of options, and that's a good thing always.
When you, when you look at, when you look at the enrollment being down, I, I think you look at what's happened over the last few years, and you look at state laws, and you look at COVID mandates, and you look at the ability to go to private schools. I think we're just kind of being silly if we're not thinking that that has part of it to do with it. So there's, there's a lot of that, so, but I'd be interested to find out what you, what you come up with.
I think also the, the families that are now moving into the tri-cities are not necessarily affluent, but they have, uh, expendable cash, that they can afford private schools also. I think that plays in the equation also. Um, and I think, I'm with Diane. If they can do it, and that's where they're happy. I think, thank, we have the option, you have that option. I, I don't think it's a bad mark against public schools. I think it's a good thing that they have options, and they can choose what they want to send their kids to. So I don't think they're silly. I don't think we've been silly. I think we're just looking at, I think it's a good thing to look at.
Anyway, so before I get up this slide, just, uh, you know, the, the one, uh, point I want to make is, so this number goes down, uh, and then it goes through all these numbers, this, this number, then here, here, here. So you're not gonna see fourteen hundred kids here running through these grade levels. And, you know, that, that's basically a, a financial deal in the end, and it's, uh, you know, teachers and class sizes and different things are gonna have to happen.
I'm sorry, Vic. Say, say that one more time. We see these numbers, but we're not gonna see the, say that again. I'm sorry.
Well, if you have eleven ninety-one or twelve hundred kids here, and even if you grow, you know, down here thirty or forty or whatever, fifty, that's twelve hundred and fifty that are going to first grade.
Right.
So we, we've lost some kids, not to use that term, but twelve fifty versus thirteen thirty-two, you know, it's, it's eighty kids. And then, and then that class here is gonna go to the next grade, and then you're gonna be down. So you're not gonna see fourteen hundred running through this. And we might, you know, there could be growth, and, you know, people move to town and things, but given the way it is now, uh, you're gonna get lower numbers here, you know, which, which financially does, you know.
So it's like we're, we're entering in smaller groups of, uh, classes of, like, whatever the kindergarten is, the graduating class of whatever. We're entering in smaller classes of and graduating out larger classes of. And that's the interesting thing, you know, with school districts is, a, a lot of times, I mean, in this is pre, pre-COVID, right? There's ebbs and flows, and like, we'll kind of see bubbles come through, and then, and then that bubble subsides. And so it's, it's hard to predict long-term, right, what's gonna happen, but it's, it's pretty easy to see cohort survival. So when you know how big that class of is, you can pretty easily predict what's gonna happen in the near future.
So that's why kindergarten, you know, it'd be nice, you know, thirteen hundred, boom, you, you know, okay, throughout the next four or five years, how this might look, but now it's a little bit, uh, you know, it doesn't look the best compared to having fourteen hundred kids run through here. And then for, for next year, for middle school, um, there's really not gonna be probably a lot of growth. You're gonna lose thirteen fifty-nine, and then you're gonna have about thirteen eighty-seven, uh, or so coming in. So it's gonna be a wash. So, uh, you know, unless there's a bunch of, you know, people moving to town and, and residential going up in our district, where there's new middle schoolers, the numbers really are gonna be the same for middle school next year in terms of budgeting. Does everybody follow that?
Mm-hmm.
And then here's some details of, uh, the different buildings. So we generally, we budget, you know, elementary, middle school, but we try to, uh, budget the, the schools as best we can, um, you know, based on staffing and things. Ami started a little bit lower there. Uh, there's Hawthorne. That's where they had some pending documentation-type issues. Uh, that currently, when I look today, is about four hundred and fifty, so that's, that's better news there. Uh, Southgate was down from budget, and, um, you know, most of the time, we're just moving a grade level up, so it's not, not rocket science on that, and somehow that one there, uh, not sure what happened. And, uh, talked to Joseph Jones there a little. Uh, not sure what happened and, uh, talked to Joseph Jones there a little bit and, you know, he was pretty concerned also. And then the mi- the middle schools, uh, pretty close to, to budget there. High schools also, uh, currently looking pretty good. Uh, Southridge still, uh, we'd like to see that even add a little, a little bit with the other schools. Any questions there?
Sure.
And then, uh, this was a declaration of intent that Dr. Pierce noted. And you see not near as many kids, uh, you know, declaring intent to, uh, go to homeschool, which the homeschool could, uh. Could be kids going to our homeschool or going out, out of, out of our district to a different school as far as I understand.
Well, a, and the, it actually, the, just to be, um, to clarify a little bit. If they're going and enrolling in a different school, they wouldn't file an intent to homeschool. It's only if they're actually providing home-based instruction. And so, um. Because at MCP, part of the day is at the parent partnership at, in our school enrolled. And part of the day is actual home-based instruction. They provide that declaration. But this, this doesn't give us any data on anybody who's enrolled in a private school.
I thought we found some, uh, last. Nope. Uh, it's just a little summary here. So, uh, you know, compared to 2019, uh, elementary's down there. Down a little bit, middle school down, high school is, is actually up. Uh, not sure why. We've been seeing, you know, a little more than expected in high school there. Uh, the head count is 19,000 generally. We've been talking about FTE, but it's really, uh, head count's unchanged. And, and most of that is due to the high school, uh, kids where the head count is, is much higher than the FTE. And then, um, you know, back in the history here, actually back to about two seven, 2017 through 19, you know, things were leveling off. And, uh, there was not, you know, really a lot of growth expected, although we would, you know, like to maintain, uh, where we were. So, you know, uh, generally it's, we're at budget, which is a lot better than probably a lot of districts. So if we come in at budget, that's, that's going to be all right. Any questions?
Perfect.
Thank you.
We'll move on to, are you doing our capital budget? I'm assuming this has to do with money?
Capital budget, yes. Okay. So, uh, we had the last spring, we did some projections there on the, the capital budget. And we normally, we have the budget, then we kind of move toward the projections. And then the actual here, uh, coming in, uh, investment earnings, a state match. This is what we pretty much received on the final payments on Southridge and Kamaiakon and, and Kennewick. There's not much left there. And then, uh, next year we'll be starting to get, or this current year will start to get Ridgeview. Expect about 9.5 million. Technology levy, those are the taxes that came in over the year for the tech levy. And you see down here, we did not spend $4 million. We got $4 million. And a lot of that's due to, some of that's due to, we have, you know, ESSR money we can do some things with in the general fund. So we bought a few more, uh, some items out of the general fund rather than using the capital fund. And then, uh, just the timing of some of the, um, replacements will hit a little more in 23, 24 out of the capital fund. And then, uh, you see Ridgeview renovation, 23.4 million spent, uh, last year. Another 7.5 million expected this year. A little bit was left to, to pay there on Kamaiakon and Southridge. And then, um, a tri-tech building, about $4 million. And I don't expect us to, to spend 1.5 million. That building is done and I think there's, you know, not maybe a couple hundred thousand left on some things. So generally about, uh, in the, the, uh, tri-tech transferring to 1.5 million to help pay for their share of this, uh, you know, their cost on this building. And they're supposed to transfer in a little more next year. This was more of a placeholder, a little bit of tri-tech and then placeholder, uh, for possibly other money. So generally we like to have about 25, 30 million, uh, in this fund as that's what was in the bond. Eventually, you know, to build a elementary 18. And that was, you know, what that money was supposed to be for. You know, the, the way it's looking, there's enrollment doesn't support a new elementary. And, uh, we'll get into some other information here on the timelines and, and state match money. But, um, that, that's kind of the target there, 25, 30 million. And if that, um, when we look at the, the bond and construction and, and timeline in January, we'll come back with that. We'll know a little bit more on what we can do with this money. We haven't been spending a lot of money out of here. As I indicated, not only for technology, but also for some projects, we've had money in the general fund. Yeah. As ESSR has freed up some things. But, uh, eventually we probably have to, um, you know, transition back to spending money. Not in the general fund as the ESSR money leaves and, and back to the capital fund. And there's just placeholders here, uh, asset preservation. That's, you know, uh, real estate flooring, different things. And normally contingency is, is budgeted for other items.
Yes, Dan.
It's not on there. And I hate to ask you this, but off the top of your head, do you know how much ESSR funding we have left?
Oh, yes. We have, we're going to have about 20 million left this year.
And we have, I know we talked about this before, but we have plans to spend every last dollar.
Yes.
Okay. Because there was a, um. Some laws to members went to, uh, training and, um, somebody contacted me and said, you have $25 million left. Uh, don't leave it on the table. And I said, I don't think you need to worry about that. But I said, the last I saw, we're, we're spending it. So I just wanted to make sure that we.
We can touch on that. Uh, December is when we'll kind of have the general fund.
Yeah.
But, uh, we expect to get 15 million, uh, booked as revenue for, for 20, uh, 23, which would leave 20 million. And as the budget indicated, a lot of that's going to pay for staff that we have right now. It pays, uh, some mental health and it pays for varsity tutors. We're doing a curriculum adoption for math, which will be, uh, in the millions. And, and then we'll keep working at trying to get reimbursed for whatever we can.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Vic, did you say in January, we, we were going to talk more about this balance and potentially what we could use?
Uh, it's more about, uh, there's another slide here. I'll get to it here. I did want to point, we have some budget here, about 2 million. And this is for our share of the Badger Mountain South, some of the infrastructure they're putting up there along our property. And then there's, um, plans for the Ridgeline Drive, I think it is, to, to start in the next year or two. That goes behind Desert Hills all across, I think, over to Sagecrest. So we'll have to pay some of that share behind Desert Hills and that could be, uh, 500,000 to a million dollars also.
Where does that go from desert? Where does it go? Say that one more time?
Ridgeline Drive.
It goes.
Oh, oh, to expand that Ridgeline Drive, okay. I know.
Yeah. So whether that's in a year or two, but it has, uh. I've been informed that, you know, they're getting on that and we have to pay our share. Uh, some of the smaller projects that, uh, were done, these are all in the general fund. Just to give you an idea of, you know, what things cost and, and some, some items there. Some of the bigger ones, we moved the double wide portable over here to Ecap. So that's almost a $200,000 project. That portal had to be, you know, hooked up to water, sewer, there's pavement, quite a bit involved in that. The single wide, we moved the cascade, not near as much involved. Everything was already there. There's no water sewer, but it was already paid when we moved other portals there. So it's basically, uh, 30,000 was mostly the moving cost. We did some, some play areas. Uh, I think you remember Kiwaiden got finished this spring. And these generally all cost around close to $200,000. Sagecrest is in process. East Gate has an area, the fall service is not the best, the toy is, uh, not working and that'll get going, uh, this year. Some HVAC costs, you will see, um, down here at the bottom, we did try to, uh, bid out some paving, uh, Kamaiakon bus lane. We only had one bid this, uh, summer, $300,000 and we did not accept. We'll go out to bid again for some projects, um, for, for next summer.
Vic, I have a quick question here and we're talking about moving these, these double, this double wide here. So we've got. So did we have to bring power, sewer, water out to the site?
A little bit of sewer and water, but it's already there, but we did have to move it a, a little bit. Um, you can see we had to pave. So that's part of it. The whole site work was about 120,000. Uh, and, uh, we had to bring in over here. That's where it would have been some sewer and water in that area.
Okay. That's my, it just seems, I mean, to move a double wide, it seems astronomical, but if there's site work and there's, then there's infrastructure they've got to put in it.
Yeah.
It's still a big load of money, but at least I can choke it down. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on this page here? And then here's the portable double wide. Here's, uh, this is a reader board. These are $40,000 to replace. We've done about seven in the past two years, five year before, two this year. This is cottonwoods. It's just a reader board, not this other stuff. It's just that. Uh, this is a Sagecrest toy. It's not quite done. It's about, uh, $180,000. So that's what it costs really to add one of those structures.
So crazy.
So we'll look at a couple more schools.
So much money.
For next summer, we try to get, you know, three areas. A lot of schools still have two areas, um, different things like that. So we'll look at a few more schools and try to figure that out. That's out in front of Sagecrest in front of the portals there. So they like to sometimes spread them out to the kids. Uh, future capital outlays here that we're looking at. So I mentioned these two, uh, infrastructure type, type projects that we'll have to pay a share on. And then, uh, the paving, we'd like to try again here with Kamaiakon bus lane. Southridge parking lots, if you've been up there, you'll notice, uh, the parking lot is kind of, uh, gravelly. It's, it's kind of coming, not come apart, but it's, it needs to be addressed. And then, uh, there's, we've been doing some roofs at Kamaiakon. We didn't do one last year, but we'd like to do the auxiliary gym locker rooms. It's going to be over $500,000. We would bid that out. And you see down here, there's more roofs at Kamaiakon. And we have an assessment done, it's a couple of years ago, and they kind of go through and tell you which are the bad areas. And I'm always asking the, the guys, hey, is it leaking? You know, then, you know, you know, maybe we don't have to do it. But generally, if they have these roofs down here, this one up here, and you get to the point where you have to do them all at once. Uh, it just doesn't work out that well financially. So, uh, we'd like to keep trying to, to knock one of these out every now and then. Uh, bathroom stalls, there's been some talk about the retrofits like Kennewick Highs where it goes all the way up down. Uh, the guys are trying to get some idea of what kind of, uh, supplies, costs we would need for that. And then, uh, some other projects, crosswalk, uh, there's a fire panel. When we built onto Southridge, there's a, a brand new fire panel, the way I understand it. There's an old fire panel there that is from when the original building. So, you know, things just don't integrate as well and the old fire panel is 35 years old. So, so that's a high priority item. Anything to add on that? And there's some grants out there that we're going to look at for that. Uh, just going through the, there's a few other things here we're trying to look at. There's some scoreboards that, uh, just, uh, very old, the components, uh, they fail. It's hard to get parts. And it's one of those things, oh, it's still working, but when they go down and, you know, it's just, and you can't fix it too. It looks like, uh, we should have been on that. Uh, play areas, looking at a couple of other areas this year. And, and still we have ESSR money where we can use the general fund to do that. ESSR money doesn't directly pay for the playground stuff. But, you know, if we use the money right and use it to pay for things that we're going to pay for anyway, it frees up money to do some of these other things. Uh, these one down here is not as much priorities, but, um, there's a few, some bleachers and stuff we'll look at, not some big ticket items. We're pretty, pretty much ahead on the reader boards. Uh, we'll keep looking at that. So any other questions there?
Questions, comments, anyone?
Mike, I was asking Ron, cause he had been in on it. We had, there were some issues about the Highlands sports area. And I was trying to clarify, there was like bathroom things. I can't remember the whole thing.
I don't remember bathrooms and we did a lot of work on the fields last, uh, met with Roy McCord and things, but bathrooms, if you have something, you have to let me know.
I was trying to remember and so I may be confusing one other bathroom with the other, but I know that there were some concerns about, um, equity of facilities.
Yeah, I think we got everything there.
There was a, there was a concern about shade area at, at Highlands.
I don't think we have any, I don't think we have any shade areas at any of the middle school, but.
They need shade.
That was one of them.
We don't want to overcook them.
It's going to be, uh, winter is coming around the corner.
We don't want snowflakes out there.
With, with the future projects, how, how does, how does stuff make that list? Like, is that stuff that we're kind of discussing as a board and asking like?
You would kind of get stuff on the list. Yeah. So I mean, if you, if you have things you want on the list, I mean, you should talk to, uh, talk to me, anything big, you know?
Cause I know there's been a lot of conversation about fencing at Washington. I don't know if that was some.
That's a smaller item. So that's something.
Oh, that's, oh, that's smaller. Oh, okay.
Look at something like that. Usually the principal would, you know, call or we'd look at that stuff. Yeah. There's fencing, we're going to do it to Ecap. They, they want some fencing. So, uh, if there's fencing, we're definitely.
Right now it's kind of a mixture of process. Uh, if you think about the Kiwaiden, um, that, the play toy that kind of came up from the board. The bathroom stalls came up from the board. Um.
There's one on here, Ferrera's, a, a playground area. It's a grass area that's get big, getting beaten down. So we'd like to pave it. But it's going to cost a lot of money, but it's on the list and that I think was brought up also here.
And then, so that's kind of one avenue. Um, I know, uh, when I go out to schools, y- you know, I hear. That's, that's one of the things I'm always asking about is facilities. And then I bring that to Vic and Eric and Ryan when we meet. So, I mean, it could be something, I think one thing that I'm never a hundred percent sure of, just to be honest, is like when an individual board member brings up. Um, I'm interested in X. I'm not sure if that's what all board members are interested in. And where it kind of falls in the priority, given that we've got a finite amount of dollars. So it seems like it would be, um, good for us to maybe shore up a little bit of a process of here's all the things. That I think, and, and, and then we get some sort of collective input from the board about is this, is this a priority? Um, or not, just so we're real clear. I mean, there's obviously needs and I think we have to also distinguish between need, needs and wants, right? Um, have to have and nice to have. And so.
Yeah, the fencing is, uh, we do fencing quite a bit. It's not like a huge project. So, you know, those are things that, you know, I'm not sure, there needs to be a huge process, but you know, if you see something where it's a safety thing or things like that. You know, those definitely are priorities. A lot of the stuff on here is related to safety. It's related to, you know, students, you know, scoreboards, students play games, stuff like that. But, um. Yeah, I don't want to take up for, for little items, you know, but, uh, bigger items definitely is a, did more of a process where we kind of vet those through. Uh, most of these have been talked about, you know, at one time or another.
So could it be, uh, running, uh. Addition to your presentation here, maybe, uh, having on the board meeting that, okay. After you give your presentation, we hear about the budget, then we talk about what do we want added to the list?
Yeah. So the asset preservation, we do that in like March.
Okay.
That's normally where, you know.
Okay.
You get more of this and.
Okay.
Yeah, this is more.
That would give us an option.
Not really as, as formal as that asset preservation type of, uh, presentation.
It seems like it was like three or four times a year, you, like after Vic talks or something, we just have a, a minute, like just to kind of, just to throw out some ideas. You know, like here, I got this idea, you got this idea, chat, chat up through it real quick and then maybe, you know, three or four times a year after a, you know, budget presentation.
Yeah, hopefully we're, we're hitting, hitting things. And if not, yeah, um, we'll have some other meetings and like I said, the asset preservation is a good process meeting too. Uh, to get that going. Uh, so then the timing, next district, uh, funding measures. So bond timing, and this kind of gets at your point, Gabe. Right now, the, the state construction assistance program, the money we get based on formulas, enrollment, square footage. We really don't qualify for, for hardly any money. Um, so, so that really, you know, causes a problem when we, we go to. You know, look at a project, uh, you know, elementary, it's 35 million and you're not going to get any money. So, so we're trying to dial that in. They have a new guy that we're working with and, um, but that is, you know, kind of an issue there.
The new guy, just to clarify, the new guys at the state.
OSCI, Mark Brown, he's our representative that we work with. And classroom space, you know, if you look at the, the numbers, they're going to say we're, uh, have two elementaries, too many. And, um. And um, you know, get based on the enrollment, you know, that's probably at least one. And then, um, so this summer, we did have the Facility Executive Committee do some walkthrough of, of the older buildings. Uh, just to get an idea, you know, what kind of shape are they in, you know, what have we done to them and things, and, and that went pretty well, and was pretty helpful. And you know, they're. They, they, they think that we've done a good job, you know, keeping those buildings up, and if you're in those buildings, definitely just take a look around, it's. Most of the time when you're in there and kids are in there, you don't really try to look at things, but uh, we have done a good job on some of those. A ten-year capital plan, so we need to update that plan, you know, revise it for uh, the things that have been completed in the bond, and that there's a phase uh, for the next bond. And get some updated cost estimates, and uh, bring that back to the board uh, to look at, and that'd be early twenty twenty-four. And then that's where, pretty much, we would probably have to say, you know, here's the next, the timeline uh, that we'd be looking at for, for doing anything. And then kind of move forward from there. And we need to be aware that, you know, the levy, the next levy coming up is gonna be in twenty twenty-six. And the levy is, you know, failed twice, we didn't put as much money back i- as we probably would have liked to, but we did have some extra money, and so we're using that. But uh, we probably need a significant increase, um, you know, you've seen some of the budget presentations where we're using some other money and things to make things work. But uh, that definitely is a priority here, a priority here, and, and then how you sandwich some other things in, um, that's what some of that discussion will look like. Any other questions there?
Any questions, comments?
I, I do have one, sorry.
Yes, sir.
You know how we painted and put lipstick on, uh, what's the school, right? No, the one, it's not really a school, dude.
Uh, Fruitland, yeah, that looks pretty good, yeah.
Can we take some of that lipstick and put it on to our building that we have down from Kennewick High School?
Yeah, we talked about kind of skinning that building, I mean, Eric, uh, you can come up a second if you have uh, thoughts.
That's George Building.
Oh, that's coming.
It's coming up.
Uh, never mind.
Oh, that's right, let's just take care of it.
He's coming up.
Cool, that's enough. H is off, please.
Four, Review, and Early Twenty-Four, is that where we'll talk about that extra funding, what we could do some projects with, is that what yours is?
Well, the, pretty, pretty much, that'll be talked about, okay, we're, we're not, we don't need a new elementary school, uh, if we don't get SCAP money, we maybe can't do a bond for a while. And then, okay, so we know now that that money kind of, we can start doing some things.
Okay, we're jumping ahead. What was the question about the building? Okay, we, we can, we haven't looked at it hard to do anything cosmetically, but we, we certainly can.
There's sort of improvement all around it now, and some, I know there's a fire station going in there, and it was just a new building, don't, maybe that was a fire station, but.
I think so.
The more new buildings go in, the more it looks like an arsehole, it belongs to us, so.
Yeah, the good news is the roof's in good condition, but it's just the siding is pretty sketchy, you know.
We talked one time about maybe some other type of siding if we could paint, but.
Right, and there might, there might be some abatement costs there.
Which building, Ron, which one you talked about?
It's the storage building.
So, yeah, we're looking at that, that's uh, definitely, stuff's picking up around there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Perfect, thank you so much. All right, Mr. Jones, you've been waiting patiently in the wings here, okay, we're now for the capital projects update.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Pierce, so uh, I'll be updating the capital projects and just kind of let you know, or let you see what uh, all this money's doing. So this is just kind of revisiting, uh, you know, all the projects that were on this last bond, uh, you know, we've completed pretty much everything, Ridgeview is in construction right now. And here it is, so as you see up at the top there, there's the uh, the rendering, and then this is actually the latest drone footage uh, that was taken uh, down below in the lower right corner. So these are all accessible via the website as well, so if you have people asking about the project, I highly encourage you to have them visit the site, there's one done every month. And uh, additionally, there's weekly reports that are on there as well, so if people want to know what's going on, it's the best way to, to find out. And here are some pictures as of last week, as you see, sods down, irrigation's going, uh, play toy installs underway. Just kind of give you an idea what the, the heart of the building looks like, that's mechanical space. This is the uh, gym multipurpose room under construction, that's the gym there. And then this is kind of what the casework scheme in some of the more common areas, so that there is the uh, entrance, like, just inside the door of the admin area. So, but uh, as you see, a lot goes into these buildings, out front here, you see, this is the uh, the, the main entrance, so it's, it's pretty, it stands out, especially with these overhangs, we like to do those, and it's pretty obvious where to get to. Uh, and once again, we are on schedule, we're December moving, in fact, we should have permanent power tomorrow, which, you know, about three months ago, we were told that they couldn't only be shipping this week. So we're, we're well ahead of the schedule, so, you know, things are looking, looking up, uh, we've also coordinated furniture move-ins, right now we're targeting the, the end of November for that. And uh, we're of course working with the uh, construction team who's been uh, very helpful, you know, we have Design West for our architect, we have Sherwinell, general contractor, then we have a Alliance Construction Management. Management Construction, please get that backwards, uh, they are our CEM assistants, so the team's working really well, making all the coordinations, making sure that we have backup plans, uh, you know, if things happen. So, uh, but yeah, right now on schedule for January three open. Any questions on Ridgeview?
Right, we talked about um, when the hard hat phase is over.
Correct.
Having the opportunity for board members to do a tour.
Yeah, right now that's looking probably around mid-November, so uh, if you were to drive by the site today, it, it practically looked done except for the construction fencing. Uh, but there's still quite a bit of finishes going on on the inside, and some MEP work still, so, once we get out of that phase, you know, uh, it'll be much easier to get onsite and kind of get a better idea of what the end product's gonna look like, so. And uh, we can definitely coordinate that, coordinate some dates.
I drive by there every week to visit a friend, and the last time I went, there was no sod, and then there was sod, and it's like, it's a whole, it's a real building already, you know, and it looks so nice.
Yes, it absolutely transformed the site, as soon as that gets down, it just really looks put together, so. Uh, any further questions on Ridgeview? All right.
I, I do have a question. I know you're sort of sick of my question, but if you go back a slide, you see the exterior side, and again, I see the glass panels near the ground level.
Correct.
Now, I, I, I'm willing to be sad, you're wrong, Ron, but on a building before I brought up that the irrigation or what have you would just stain or discolor those times, have you seen that as an issue?
No, not, not anything's been brought to my attention, now that, so what you're referring to is the spandrel glass, um, which, you know, is really popular with Design West buildings, I believe another building we discussed this on was Tritech. So one thing we have done, yeah, in, pretty much as a rule, is really tried to keep sprinklers away from buildings as, in general, in fact, if you, as you can see on Ridgeview here. Part of the design, the south, which was where much of the wind comes from, we've pushed out this, this asphalt uh, apron right here. Uh, not only to allow for more uh, playscape for, you know, things like Core Square and, and things like that, but uh, also to help the survivability of grass, you know. Vic had mentioned Fuerze Elementary, where the grass just outside an entrance has just been pummeled because like, they line up there, they, five hundred feet, three times a day run across it, you know. Uh, so, that's just part of that kind of overall plan and strategy, trying to keep water away from the building in general. So, uh, I, I've not seen that specifically, but there are measures that have been taken, if that is an issue, to really get around it on this one, so.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right. So, uh, Tritech Skill Center Building C, so also referred to as Phase One Point Five, uh, for facility purposes, we call it Building C because it has a big old C on it. Uh, and that's how it sits on the, on the site, so this was also a Design West Architects building, built by Banlin. And uh, we have Arculus Design and Technical Services as our CEM support on this one. So this was uh, basically a building for the, the pre-vet tech and like pre-electrical programs. So, uh, let's see here, if I can get my images to start, there we go, so here are some recent pictures, so as you see, the building is uh, built and occupied. This is, here's a shot of the pre-electrical uh, lab space, so they go in there, they, they take turns like, uh, putting electrical through those walls. This is the lab space for the pre-vet tech, right here. And as you can see, uh, that, let's see, as it corresponds to layout, you have classroom here, the uh, the pre-electrical here, then you have the pre-vet uh, classroom space there, so. Not, a couple of programs in that building, but it also freed up space in the existing Tritech's uh, footprint for some other programs to expand, so real plus for them. Any questions about the Tritech Building C project? All right, that concludes my update, yes?
That, the area by Southridge, is it, do we own any of that?
To the north, it, it's as we discussed, the, uh, we, it's the triangle to the north between us and the apartment area.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Okay, next on our agenda is the student goal report, all students are safe, known and valued, Mr. Scott.
Okay, good evening, um, coming in tonight to talk a little bit, um, Tracy, you talked earlier about our strategic plan objectives that you approved at a, at a previous board meeting. Um, and so this is really an opportunity to talk a little bit about some of those strategic objectives as relating to our goal of having students be safe, known and valued. But also really, um, also tied into our staff goal of having safe and respected and valued staff members. So we, we come to you a few times during the course of the, of the year, um, to talk about student safety and, and, and uh, and some other items. Uh, typically in March or April, uh, we will be administering our district-wide annual student survey, um, then we come to you in May, and kind of report on those survey results, along with some attendance data and discipline data. And then in, uh, during the summer and early fall, we do a lot of work to kind of take a look at that data, look, take a look at the outcomes we had for the previous year, and we develop those uh, objectives that we bring to you. Um, and so October is really our first opportunity to highlight for you just some of the strategies that we're putting into work and putting into place to try to impact, um, some of the things we find, um, through that collection of data. So this year, we've got several uh, student safety and security objectives, and I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about three of those. On the first one, um, the first strategy or objective that we have is to develop and implement strategies for continuing to convey high expectations and accountability for student behavior. Um, so we've had some changes to state law in regards to student behavior, and we really want to make sure that, that what we are conveying is that we do have really high expectations and accountability for that, and so. I want to talk a little bit about some of the strategies we're employing with that. We also um, have an objective to review, um, and to train our staff on student behavior and discipline policies to ensure that we are consistently um, applying expectations and implementing across our schools, so I'll talk a little bit about that. And then we also are implementing or updating basically our comprehensive emergency management plan, um, which um, will help us address some of the issues and some, and provide some clarity to staff and to community. Um, just in regards to what we're doing to, to manage emergency in- incidents, but also to plan and prepare um, for those, so we'll talk a little bit about all of those things. Um, it's really important to remember that, again, all of the work that we're doing in, in this regard is really in support of what we want for students and their outcomes when they leave our system. Because when we look at our learner profile, and particularly those areas around the outside ring, these are skills that students are going to need, um, as they move out into um, further education, employment, and life. And opportunities to work with students in regards to behavior, in regards to um, social emotional learning, in regards to how they handle, um, you know, anxiety and the stresses of school, and getting along with other people. Are all part of that, that goal, and are all found within the art learner profile. So now we've got two focus, one is kind of talking again about building a district focused on student behavior and discipline, and then Ryan Jones is gonna come back up and talk to us about, um, kind of our, our facility safety and security, um, and, and looking at some of that infrastructure. So as we look at where we're at, um, as I said, we, we will come to you, uh, we'll administer a survey in March, and we'll come, report to that in May. But right now, eighty-five percent of KSD students, grades K through twelve, report that they feel safe, included and welcome at school, based on our survey, this information's been shared with you previously. We ask a number of questions to derive that, um, but we ask students about how they feel in terms of safety on our school grounds, how they feel safe riding the bus. How, um, whether they feel like staff and students are friendly to them, um, whether stu-, uh, our adults know them, and they feel like they can go to them with problems, um, and whether or not they're feeling respected. I'm sorry, thank you, I just started going and I just, three through twelve, thank you. So, from those, from that survey, from other data that we collect throughout the year, um, we have our buildings, uh, as part of their school improvement plans, which will come to you, um, on October twenty-fifth, um, for approval. Um, all of our buildings are required to address um, a, 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 a safe, known and value goal, and so these are just three examples, um, that I pulled. And one from Vista, one from Horse Seven, one from Kennewick High, just demonstrating that all of those plans are gonna be including those, and seeing kind of the variety of goals that are set, and also. More importantly, the objectives and the things that our schools are doing to attain those, so, uh, again, Vista's really concerned about making sure that, that students are answering no to the question about, do you see unsafe behavior at school? And um, uh, Horse Seven Hills wants ninety percent of their students to report feeling safe in a sense of belonging at their school. And at Kennewick High, they're, they really understand that our high school students need to feel that they have an adult, a safe adult to come to, um, when they have problems, when they have concerns. And so those are examples of those safety goals, and again, you'll see those in all of our school improvement plans when we bring them to you on October twenty-fifth. Um, when we talk about how we convey high expectations, um, you know, we, we have, we are uh, helping schools and facilitating the development and ongoing implementation of multi-tiered systems of support. The concept behind multi-tiered systems of support is that all students receive a level of support, be it academic, behavioral, social, emotional, just as part of their school day. But that students come to school with various needs, and sometimes students need more than just the, the, the first tier of, of those supports, they need additional supports. When we convey expectations though in all of our schools, um, we really want to be sure that all students are, are having the same expectations. And so these are some examples as well that I pulled just out of schools, this is an example from Cascade Elementary, um, and this is their, their expectations, and you see a lot of commonality within these. Um, they talk about what the expectations are in the hallway, the playground, the cafeteria, um, and even in the bathroom, assemblies, classrooms. Um, and I know that in talking to Scott Childs, one of our, our safety officers, um, he's commented on it all at the schools that he serves. How so clearly you can see those expectations for students being played out as the students move around the building and go to playgrounds, um, and that, how, and he was really impressed just at the level of, of, of. Care that our staff is taking to try to impress upon students those expectations. But it doesn't stop at elementary, so here's an example from Park Middle School, you see a similar type of setup where there is expectations that are shared, um, on the cafeteria, the courtyard, et cetera. They address it with students about what that behavior might look like, what it sounds like, what it feels like. And even in, in high school, we want to be working with our students on what the expectations are, so at Southridge High School, they've got RISE expectations, which really, um, kind of group them around respect and integrity, safety and engagement, and so they have those all listed out as well, so. These are the, these are the way that we set those expectations for students, and the way that we want them to be, um, conducting themselves, but we also realize that a lot of students, um. Or, I shouldn't say a lot, but we realize that students are gonna do what they do with learning, when you're learning math, you make mistakes, when you're learning reading, you make mistakes, and you learn from those mistakes, and behavior is really no different. So, we do have um, responses in mind when we have students who are struggling with behavior. And so this is an example, or this is, this is from our um, district procedures around um, how we respond when students are engaged in behavior that is not acceptable at school. Basically, we kind of group these around levels of intervention, and so a lower, a lower level, a level one intervention and response, would be something that we would expect, you know, to be happening in a classroom setting, um, for the most part, and so there are examples there. Level two, um, responses happen when maybe those level one responses aren't effective, or the students aren't continuing to exhibit behavior, and those are really building-based interventions, but. Both of the level one and level two interventions are really designed to keep students in school, to keep stu- students engaged in their education, and help them learn from their mistakes. But we do have students who sometimes need to spend some time out of school, um, and so level three interventions and responses, and level four interventions and responses kind of guide that. So we um, have put a lot of thought and process, and we're working a lot with our school principals and assistant principals on how they fairly and consistently apply the interventions. But what we don't want there to be is, we don't want there to be a, any message there that, um, as we try to lower our rates of school exclusion, that students don't get, don't get suspended from school, that's just not the case. We know that there are situations where those, those, those consequences are warranted, and so we really want to make sure that we have great interventions at all levels, but that we. but that we are addressing the severity of the student behavior in a way that is appropriate. To that end, though, again, we have lots of ways to address those, 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 those levels of intervention. So we have lots of resources that we have at our schools. So obviously, you've heard a lot this fall about our school safety officers at elementary. And those folks are really there for supervision, and they're really there to help keep a safe environment. We also have school security officers at middle and high schools. We have one at each middle school and two at each of our comprehensive high schools. And their job is really, again, supervision, but it's also to aid in investigation, to connect with students as they need to, to make sure that students have a safe environment, and they're there to help the administrative teams be able to enforce those expectations that we share, that I shared earlier. We also have our school resource officers, which are Kennewick Police Department employees, three of their high schools, three full-time at high schools, and three full-time at our middle schools with, with two of those assigned to a couple of, of buildings so that we have all five of our middle schools have access to school resource officers. And then as we've shared before, the plan is to have the additional two come on in January. And in recent discussion with KPD, it looks like they are on track for doing that. So looking forward to that happening. But in addition to those folks who are there to help with the, you know, supervision, we also have other resources that I think it's really important for us to remember as we're talking about how we help students manage their, and manage their behavior and stay safe in school. So we have school counselors. We have one each at our elementaries. We have two each at our middle schools. And this year, we added one. So we have a total of five at each of our comprehensive high schools. We also employ migrant counselors. We have ten migrant counselors spread between elementary, middle, and high schools. So that's additional counseling help that's available to, to, to schools and to our migrant students. As Vic mentioned, we have mental health, a mental health therapy contract with comprehensive mental health. We have funding set aside for probably about nine of those folks. It is hard to find mental health therapists and have them employed. I think right now, we've got about four or maybe five that are employed with us. We're always looking, working with comprehensive to help fill those positions. We also contract with ESD to provide student assistance program staff, which are there to help students not only with, you know, with some substance abuse issues and also with helping them with family substance abuse issues. So they're working with those folks, and we have, I believe, six of those individuals. Plus, we have our school psychologists. We have the school psychologist who's assigned to every building. We have school nurses who are assigned to every building. And most importantly, probably, or maybe not most importantly, because as others would say that that's not fair, but really importantly, is classified staff. Our classified staff do a tremendous job every day of supervising our playgrounds, our buses, to keep, to keep students safe. And so I really think it's important that we realize all the resources that go into that. And we're a large school district of, you know, nineteen thousand students, and we do a really great job every day of keeping our students safe and, and helping them learn. So the other piece that we have in our objectives is around kind of how we're having training and providing and developing the skills for our staff to do that work. So we, we've done training this year so far around threat assessments. So when students do have issues at school that are fairly significant and are concerning around safety, we have processes that we go through to assess the, the student's threat level and to develop strategies and supports for that student to help them be at school and be safe, and to help our staff know that, that there are, that they are safe. We have crisis prevention intervention training to help de-escalate student behavior and to appropriately physically intervene when necessary, as well as gang awareness information training. With our systems, though, we also have systems of support. We have our positive behavior intervention system, but really a tiered fidelity inventory that we're working with all of our schools to implement so that they can take a look at the development of that multi-tiered systems of support system and where they're at with that on the continuum and what supports they might need to develop and, and how healthy their supports are. And we do lots of lockdowns and evacuation drills, of course, to keep our, our buildings prepared. In additional supports, we do monthly workshops with our building administrators to help them develop the skills and, and to help them problem-solve situations that we can help support. We do monthly data analysis with our secondary assistant principals because we want to make sure that we're being consistent in the application of our discipline and also that we are, that we're, that we are managing effectively student behavior. We also have external coaching that we contract with to support the multi-tiered systems of support development. And we have a district MTSS specialist who supports that work as well. And, and one of the things that she's working on this fall is working with our preschool programs, both the KDC and ECAP, as they develop good systems for their students as well and start that, that learning even younger than kindergarten. As well as that, we have our support for social-emotional learning. So we have curriculum supports, and we also have other types of frameworks within our building to help our students manage those, those aspects of social-emotional learning that are so important. When I went to school, we didn't, I think, ever talk about social-emotional learning. But we do know if you talk to any of our educators that our students are coming with some greater difficulties, some greater challenges, and when they come to school not socially emotionally prepared, learning just doesn't happen. And so we need to make sure that we're addressing it while still focusing on our, our, our reading, writing, and math and, and all those other things as well. Our third objective that I want to talk about really quickly is our comprehensive emergency management planning. So again, we're updating and revising our plans. The goal is to develop more consistency in language and terminology around drills and procedures. We find that there's some inconsistency, which while all of our schools have procedures and processes in place, without that consistency, it leads to some, some, some confusion sometimes when we're communicating. So it's not that we don't have those procedures in place. We do have them. But it, it's just not really clear when one school's talking about a yellow light lockdown and another one's talking about a blue light lockdown, what are we talking about? So we want some consistency there. We want to clarify the roles and responsibilities and the communication structures we have in place in the district. We want to strengthen the quality of our emergency preparedness and response. And so the work teams are, are meeting to revise and develop all the sections of the plan. Our, our goal is to have that draft plan. We have a very aggressive timeline. We want to get that draft plan in front of our community agencies. Kennewick Police, Benning County Sheriff, Kennewick Fire Department for feedback. And then we're going to develop, or we're going to share our draft plan at our district safety team, which is also something that we, that we beefed up last year. So we need quarterly, large group, including facilities, business. Tracy leads the meeting, and we want to bring that to them in November so that they can take a look at the work that we've done. The work groups that we have in place, just to give you an idea of the topics that we're working on as part of that plan, incident command, our school-level planning, the communication structures, our emergency response procedures, transportation, and evacuation. We also want to spend a little bit of time thinking about how do we recover from a big incident? And what all goes into planning for that if we were to have a very significant emergency incident that we needed to, to, to handle? And then also the prevention training and drills are all part of that as well. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ryan to talk a little bit about our district facility safety.
I have some questions, particularly on the SEL tab you had there. What are we using Second Step for? What, what program is utilizing Second Step?
So it depends on the building. A lot of the folks who are using Second Step are using them, our counselors, as part of their social-emotional learning groups coming into classrooms. We might have some of our staff who are using aspects of Second Step as part of, as part of their morning meetings or, you know, kind of their, their structures of times within their classroom to, you know, kind of, again, work with students in, in that regard.
So it's, it's kind of through all the grade levels and all the different... Because, so what, I guess, what's the difference between Second Step and Character Strong? Aren't they, aren't they similar programs?
Second Step and Character Strong, they're similar in programs, but they're, they're different. They're different sets of curriculum?
Purposeful People is the elementary, younger version of Character Strong.
Right, right. Second, but Second Step is a completely different program. Okay. Have we reevaluated using Second Step? Because I think Richland just actually voted, talked about not using it. Second Step's actually been voted out by multiple districts in, across the state for disturbing content, they say, and stuff like that. And I'm just concerned that maybe that Second Step is violating our policy 2340 with the division of, of stuff using that curriculum. So we looked at that.
Yeah, so one of the, one of our curriculum advisory committees this year that Alyssa St. Hilaire is overseeing, that whole curriculum advisory committee process, one of the committees is our, is looking at social-emotional learning, the curriculum we're using in the district, and developing a sense of, of our needs and whether or not that's meeting our needs. And so there, that is one of the processes that they're going through. It's one of the reviews, the curriculum reviews that's happening. I don't know to what extent... So one of the, we have our social-emotional learning standards that the board adopted last year. But what we don't have is we don't have a curriculum framework in terms of what's used at every grade level, what curriculum... It's, it's really been left up to the buildings to decide. And I think that's one of the, the goals of the curriculum advisory committee this year is to, is to get, is to bring that more in line. So...
Yeah, I'd be concerned that maybe that's violating our policy that we passed. So I would, I would look at it with that lens, especially with... I mean, there's boards in Virginia that have discontinued using this because of the content, they say, teaches, uh, components of stuff that we don't want taught here in our district. So...
Could you say some of those components? Virginia's very conservative, so I know they have...
Virginia's very conservative?
The governor is very conservative.
Age-inappropriate sexual content is one. And then, of course, we, we had the discussion about critical race theory in the tenants, and we outlined the stuff that we didn't want in the curriculum. And some of those things are, are listed as, as what's being taught in the curriculum. So I'm just asking, when we review it, we make sure we're not violating our policies and, and go from there.
And I know that Alyssa's listening, so she certainly, and again, that's one of the... We might look at how we're addressing the standards, the social-emotional learning standards that were developed and what we'll best do. And so I know that that, particularly you raising the concern.
Can we put a time on the agenda to talk about that?
I think we have to have staff review it first, and then they can bring it in. So, because again, this would... The only one that's usually powered up on this is Gabe at this point. So having a conversation about it is probably not warranted until the staff can bring us something that we can review as a group.
Yeah, so I guess let me clarify that. So, so can we have this, can we like put it on the future agenda to give the staff time to review and look at it, and then have a chance to talk about it? Like, I just want to make sure it's not falling to the cracks. I'm also, I'm on the website. You're reading about it.
It's on her, it's on Dr. Pierce's list as we speak.
Any other questions about... So now I'll turn it over to Ryan to talk about.
Thank you.
Hello. So I'll be talking more, I guess, about the, the actual facilities and physical approaches to safety and what we're doing in the school. So, so this may look familiar to you because it's been presented multiple times. You know, our focuses haven't changed from a facility standpoint. You know, we continue to push access control, observation monitor, monitors, multiple means of activation in the case of emergency, communication lights, and interior containment. So as we've talked about before, as you can see, like, basically all, our entire perimeter is secured with credentials, even main entry vestibules. You can go into the first entry, but there's a secondary layer there that is credential-based. Or you have to be given permission by school staff. So, and we've continued to expand observation monitors or provide those to multiple staff as, as many as necessary. So, you know, it varies depending on the school. Obviously, a high school with security officers, they'll have an additional space where they'd have observation monitors. But we do try to make them as available to as many people as possible just for situational awareness at any given time. And then, of course, activation. You know, we have software means of activating, you know, various emergency, whether it be blue light or, or lockdown or even the, the yellow amber light. Playground evac is what we've called in the past, but it's more or less just a, a general notification at this point. And as you can see, communication lights, so there's multiple blue lights located in all the spaces. Basically, it's, they're not in common spaces. The whole intent behind the blue light, as you may recall, is, is to try and to basically secure the classroom so instruction can continue because there may be just a disturbance, not, not a, not a critical incident, but just something where, hey, we're going to keep students out of the hallways because there's something going on, but please continue to teach. But that blue, the blue light notifies teachers of that. So, and we, the reason we don't put it in the, the common spaces, of course, because we don't want it to escalate. You know, if, if they see there's bells and whistles going off, we don't want the, the incident to get worse than it may already be. And of course, interior containment, I spoke to the vestibule. You see, this is, this is more of a, when there's an incident, say a lockdown condition, you know, the, the interior and the exterior are secure. And this is more of a daily operation where you can, once again, you get into that first layer, then you have to have an interaction or a credential to get into, into the actual building. And of course, throughout the building, we have multiple means of securing areas. Once again, the intent is to limit mobile, in a, in a, like, say a lockdown instance, it's to limit mobility through the building because we will have secured students. At that point, anybody left, we just want to make sure they can't move around too easily. So we do that through various means, whether it's a coiling gate, metal or wood doors in the corridors, or in the Kennewick High School, if you haven't seen these, the lawn doors, they're actually pretty neat. So, when they're working. No, I'm kidding. They're, they're, they're always working, of course. No. So now let's talk about applications. So here's an example of a most recent application, which would be Ridge View, of course. So it's kind of hard, the, the amber light didn't really show up very well, but you see amber light notification. And this just kind of shows that from basically all around the building, there's exterior notification. And once again, that's, if there's something going on, we want to let people that are coming to the building know, hey, situational awareness, there's, there's something out of the norm. Please be aware. And of course, we have access control. Here's a shot. It's under construction by the, the, the main entry vestibule. This window here would be the walk-up window, which is here as well. So that is actually a sliding window, and it's, you know, bullet resistant. It, it's, it's a very well-built window. But we do make it sliding so that, you know, that you could still have that human interaction as you'd like to because we don't want these places necessarily to be prisons either. You know, we want them to be welcoming, but we do want to take measures. And so we found that that sliding window works as a, as a great in-between because they can opt to have it closed or open depending on what their comfort, comfort level. And then down here in the lower right is just a picture of corridor containment. So, you know, before you can get down to the classrooms, there's another layer. And that, of course, doubles for during commu-, uh, community events as well so that we can keep, you know, the community, when there's, school's not occupied, there's a community event going on. We obviously don't want them roaming around, so into the classroom area. So that, that's functions in that purpose as well. So... Now, this is something I don't think we've maybe spoken about or presented before, but we might have talked about it a little bit. This is kind of an ongoing joint effort between the Kennewick School District and the city of Kennewick. You know, they're always trying to improve pedestrian safety throughout the city. And they've been very proactive in working with us and making us a partner in that. They realize that, you know, schools are an area of emphasis, and they've approached us on multiple occasions to be a part of that. So this is, uh, some work that's been going on very recently. It was supposed to actually take place last spring, but due to some material lead times, they weren't able to get started until just before school. In fact, Highlands, I think, the sidewalk was getting tore up the day before school. So it was some difficult timing, some coordination, but they, they were good partners in that. The schools were great working through us with that. They were very understanding. But as you can see, this is Fourth Avenue along Four, or Fourth Avenue Highlands Middle School, just north there. And this is, I think, been brought up multiple times as, you know, an area of concern. So this will be receiving a, a rapid flashing beacon here pretty soon. All the, as I mentioned, all the sidewalk infrastructure is done. They're just getting ready to put in the units. So, you know, very shortly, that'll be fully operational and just really improve safety along Fourth Avenue because it is a busy arterial. So it'll be a great site for us. This one is located, another great site, at Kamaiak High School, crossing Edison. You know, they put in a crosswalk several years ago, which was an improvement, but it's still a very busy street, and people have a tendency to be distracted. So they are actually putting in a rapid flashing beacon here. I don't know if you've ever gone down Edison around lunchtime. You know, it's, it's well, it's very much needed. So that'll be a definite improvement.
Don't they have a, a flashing beacon just down the road, like by the apartments and Albertsons?
They do. Yes, correct. Just different, yeah. It, it predated, so that was put down probably several years ago. But yes, this one, because you could argue, why don't they walk up and cross there?
I mean, Albertsons versus...
Oh, I think it's because of the apartments there, another high-density area. But yeah, they, I mean, on that sidewalk at Edison, I don't, if I recall, I don't think anything existed up till a couple of years ago. At that location, kids would just kind of cross. So anything was an improvement, but this is definitely an improvement on that. So...
I thought that was the second one. I thought there was one, uh, yeah, let's see. So you, you know where the car wash is? Just north of the car wash. There's a second.
There very well could be, because once again, there's apartments, similar condition. There's apartments right across the street, dense pop, dense population. So I just think they had never really, I think, in a lot of people's minds, it's like, why wouldn't you come off the Kamaiak property, walk on the sidewalk north, cross that, or walk over there instead of, you know, immediately crossing and then walking north? So sometimes, you know, the kind of ongoing joke in construction is, you know, you don't build any sidewalks when you build a building. You, you go first year, just see where the trails are, and then your people naturally walk. And then you put in the sidewalks, because nobody ever follows sidewalks. So... nobody ever follows sidewalks, so, I guess pedestrians will do what they do, and everybody else just tries to keep up, so, that's kind of the result of, that's how Edison came about. And then this one is outside, just on Washington Street, near Washington Elementary School, just the northeast corner there, so another site, and once again, Washington Street, another busy street, and then this is Olympia 22nd, so this is Canyon View, you know, Olympia is a busy street, but it's really just, I mean, there's just a lot of congestion right in here, so, a lot of activity, so they put one in here, they'd actually intended to put a second one, but due to some, I guess, well, what happened was, the cost came in higher than they were expecting, and they had to commit some cuts, luckily, most of ours survived the cuts, because they had one time in plan to do, I believe it was, it was like fourteen units, and they ended up having to cut down to ten, and all of ours survived that, so, you know, once again, they're focused and emphasis on safety around our schools, you know, paying off there.
I have a question.
Yes.
And you may not be able to help me here, so bear with me, but around 27th, on 27th, there's actually a speed limit sign, the school zone, and I assume it's for Lincoln, even though it's on 27th.
Is it, on what side of Union is it?
On the west side of Union.
It's probably for Chinook.
No, no, it was there before Chinook.
Was it?
It's up for, it's the back street that goes down.
Oh, you might be right, because maybe for pedestrian traffic coming from the north or something, like, they would, they're from like Creekstone and anything, and south of that, I mean, south, yeah, they might need that.
And then north of Geese, there's another speed zone where, what's that name street? There's. Yeah, Union, I think it is, Union. Where I'm going with this is that Lincoln is back from those two locations a bit, and we have speed zone, but then we get to Highlands, and I don't think there's a speed zone, I don't think there's a twenty miles per hour.
There's, there's, there should be, I'd have to check, because I'm pretty sure we've gotten calls about, maybe even that specific one, before, about flashing outside of school years, but I can verify, you know, a lot of times, like the one on 27th, for instance, you know, there's a good chance that it could be, because when there's a major development, you know, developers come in, and that's a lot of requirements, that, you know, we have an opportunity to come to the table and provide comments, and the city, of course, is looking out for our interests as well, as far as placement of beacons and things like that, and it's a lot of, so you see a lot of infrastructure and newer developments, because it's just part of the package, some of the older areas, it's a little more of a coordinated effort.
She's telling me I'm blind.
Okay, but, you know, they're very well, I mean, they're very well maybe sites where there may be, like, there's definitely coverage on streets, but, you know, four sides?
Yeah.
Maybe not always, so, but once again, that's kind of this continuous effort the city works with us on.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And then last here is Westgate Elementary School, so this is a little, this is not necessarily strictly an RR, a rapid flashing beacon project, this is more of just a safe routes to school project, so the city applied for a safe routes to school grant, we, of course, provided a letter of support, along with some percentage with that, because that helps our score when it comes to the grading, the applications, so as a result, we were actually approved for this project, so what they're going to end up doing, as you can see here, this is completely undeveloped on the east side, as far as pedestrian traffic goes, so what they're going to be doing is basically sidewalking that entire side, putting in a crosswalk NR RFB, rapid flashing beacon, right across from these apartment areas, or really like KDC area, as well as putting in our rapid flashing beacons at the intersection of Conway and Fourth Avenue, so quite an improvement for the west side of that school, and that was actually something that was brought to our attention by the assistant principal at Westgate, so, you know, they had approached us, and we approached the city, and started doing some research, and they thought that'd be an excellent project to apply for, and it ended up paying off, so that's how, you know, just speaking to how some of these projects evolved, that's how this one evolved, as you can see the dates here, so, you know, next year, January next year, it should be fully up and going.
So they're going to, they're going to sidewalk from Fourth to Kenwood Avenue on that whole side?
Correct, I don't think, I don't think as far as Kenwood Avenue, I think it basically goes as far as the apartments here, you know, because once again, the primary focus is safe walks to school, so, because they have quite a, I think they have quite a few kids that come from those apartments up on Conway, so.
Cool.
Any questions about this project? Yeah, so once again, just a, just a great partnership with the city of Kenwood, and, you know, they continue to look out for our interest, and make sure we have a seat at the table, so.
Cool.
Any questions?
All I have.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have two last, so, Dr. Pierce, how do you think these last two, last two agenda might as well take, trying to decide if we want to take a five-minute break, or what are we going to, you guys okay, you want to power through?
Maybe fifteen minutes?
All right, sounds like we're going to power through. Okay, so next up, we're going to talk about some RFID, radio frequency identification badges for students.
So this was a topic that Mr. Mabry raised, we talked about it briefly last time, but didn't want to talk about it when you weren't here, Ron Cohn then is not here tonight, and he's got the most information really about the topic, but Ron and Ron had a conversation, and Ron gave me, Ron Cohn gave me some information, so, Ron, Mr. Mabry, do you want to start off just with kind of the topic, and then I can fill in with what information I have, and you can talk about what you and Ron talked about, or how do you want to proceed?
Right, Ron contacted, he asked what I had in mind when I spoke of these, and what did I think, the advantage of having them, and it's, I don't want to, I don't want to talk down to anyone about, you know, what these badges are, but they're ID tags, sort of like, you can get Apple tags, like, it also, and it sort of puts a beacon, it's not a beacon, I'm using the wrong term, so, but it gives a source that you can be tracked by this badge, by your ID badge, wherever you are on campus, you can be identified, that's the location where you're supposed to be, or you're venturing outside, if you're ever going to, inside of a store, and you take merchandise out of the store without these tags being, it alarms the school, so it's that same kind of idea, idea, but it would be on your ID badge, and so if a parent's, you know, a kid's not reporting to school, you can say that kid didn't cross the barrier today, that badge was not identified, it's coming into the school, or what have you, kids say, I want to go to the bathroom, and you can't find them, you can search for that tag and see where it's beacon or where it comes from, so that's the idea.
So I can share what I know from what Ron Cohn shared with me, so just a little bit of, I guess, background in, he said about fifteen years ago, Ron Cohn had put together a project that was kind of similar to this, I don't know if the technology has evolved, I'm sure it has, but to track elementary students on and off the bus, to make sure that no students ever get left behind on a bus, but at that time, the board really didn't have any interest in pursuing this, and had some concerns about, you know, tracking students and that kind of thing, so the project was dropped. You know, I mean, I think, I think there's, we could really talk through pros and cons now, one of, you know, obviously, pros, as Mr. Mabry pointed out, safety, knowing where students are, all of those things, on the, just sort of the considerations or implications, and maybe concern side has to do really with cost and implementation, and in the, and potentially, I don't know about what people's perceptions or feelings are about, like, the privacy piece, so right now, we don't issue, like, of course, staff have cards, and I don't think it's the same RFID kind of thing, right, but we use them for control access, yeah, so right now, we don't have those issued to students, some schools have implemented, like, park students do wear their ID badges, like, around, on a lanyard, because it helps them identify students who aren't supposed to be on their campus, but it's just kind of difference, we don't have a standard approach, right? So we would just have to look into kind of deeply, what would it cost, and whether, you know, if this is something that the board wanted us to look into, we would do a full review of it and be able to come back with some hard information for you. You know, Ron mentioned just kind of the implementation pieces around students letting their friends use their badge or card, or losing their card, and us having to replace them, and those kinds of things, just in, he gave me some initial cost information, and said that costs would include the cards, which are currently two dollars and ten cents each, he said, we don't have any data to tell us what percentage of the cards would be lost, but I think it's safe to assume that there would be a percentage of cards being lost, and that would need replacement, he said, we'd need printers located at each school to produce the ID cards, with costs ranging from like six to fifteen hundred dollars, plus a per print of about twenty-five cents each. He said a reader that could read RFID across doorways would cost between six hundred and a thousand dollars for each reader, and then there'd have to be some wiring and installation costs, excuse me, our current card readers only read a few centimeters, he said, and so he doesn't think we'd like, want to replace those, with readers that read further away, because those systems are tied into our door security. So we might potentially need thousands of readers if we were going to cover all the possible doors, where students would be able to enter or exit a building, right, and then we'd need some software and things like that, so he mostly gave me information just on potential costs, is what I have right now, and he said with limited review, the costs for this would be estimated to range from fifteen thousand to a hundred thousand per year. So I think, you know, it would just be beneficial to have the board have the opportunity to just talk about what are their thoughts, pros and cons, and then provide me with some direction of, do you want us to dig deeper into this, you know, because this is a pretty high-level assessment on Ron Cohn's part.
Some, have some questions? I mean, just comments, is that okay? So, some of my comments would be, you know, like, so this would be, look like a credit card, essentially, right, is that what I'm understanding? That kind of would be like that size?
Do you know, I don't know what they look like.
No, that's, I think it's a chip, it's what I'm talking about.
How do you hold it or carry it?
It would be on your ID badge.
It's like a, it's on their lanyard badge.
You got something like that, you got something like that.
We have, we have similar cards, like, out there, you've got little RFID readers, where you use it to get into rooms or your computers.
They're in between the two layers, so they just look like your lanyard.
So this is going like a lanyard, and that the kid forgets his or her thing, then it's that day for school, then it's, is it a new one, but then they have a second one at home, and then, do we make them go back to home, I mean, how do, what do we do when they forget them, those are some of my questions, you know, can we read them when they're outside of school, are we, I mean, how far does the read, is like, as soon as you cross out the high school, boom, it's off?
Yeah, you have to go through the.
Okay, and then, yeah, so, those are, those are some of my questions.
Looking at, Mallory's kind of making a smile, so, student voice, what do you think?
Yeah, so, I guess, like, similar to what you were saying, Mr. Valentine was like, I'm thinking more like, if a student didn't, like, chose to not have it, like, they didn't, so you're saying, like, what if they forget it, also, like, they don't want to be tracked, so, they just don't, I mean, so they couldn't do things they shouldn't be doing?
Popped out.
So then it's like, well, then what do we do then if they're not?
Go to the bathroom, leave it in their desk?
Yeah, or, like, I don't, I guess I don't really understand how we get around that, and, like, is there consequences for them not, like, consistently not bringing it, or, and then if there's not, then what's the point of doing that if kids can just really easily not have it?
So here, so I'm going to jump in here real quick, since our legal counsel would be sitting in the back row, reading the funnies, would you come up here, please?
Just hoping you didn't.
I know, well, I couldn't help myself, we're paying him to be here, may as well use him, so, good evening, Mr. Brown.
Good evening.
Question for you, what, do students have an expectation of privacy, or what are their rights to privacy when they're at a public school? How's that for an easy question?
Yeah, there's a whole, there's a whole line of case law on that, I don't know how much you want me to go into it, but it differs whether it's privacy from their locker, on their person, but they don't, they don't shed their constitutional rights when they walk into the school, so, they do have some, go ahead.
My, what I'm offering does not violate someone's privacy, you cannot take a picture with it, it's not a recorder, it's a device to say you're where you're supposed to be, and when people turn their kids over to us during the school day, we are saying, we know where your kid is, from the time you enter this school until the end of the school day, we know where you are, and if a kid, good points, very good points you made, but if a person is out to break the rules, they're going to break the rules, we can't stop that, this is for people that, hey, I want to know where my kid is, call, if someone calls in and say, hey, my son's supposed to be in fifth period or second period, and you go in there not in second period, you can say, oh, we have him in the bathroom, going to the bathroom, or whatever that device is saying that that person is, if that person is purposely misleading, that's a different issue, that's an honesty issue, that's an integrity issue, we can't beat that, you can't, you know what I mean, you can't rule that out, that's going to happen, but the idea is to, and note, there's nothing, from what I'm used to, because we're using that word, it's not a violation of someone's privacy, it's just identification, where are you?
Safety.
In the safety.
I'm just, I'm just playing devil's advocate, as we look at this, is what's the, you know, what's the downside of this, because I see, you know, there's both sides of this that could be advantageous, but again, there's always going to be blowback to anything, you know, you know, to Mallory's point, you know, people feel like they're being tracked, so, that's a, now, the problem is, if you don't want to be tracked, you probably shouldn't have one of these.
That's right.
Because they know, Instagram knows exactly where you are, as does Google and Facebook and everyone.
A lot of the, a lot of the cases on privacy have to do with searches and things like that, for example, you talk about the phone, there's rules around circumstances when you can search students' phones, when you can search their lockers and things like that, so, but as far as tracking, that's, I can, I can look and see if there's case law out there to see if tracking a student would be considered an unreasonable search of the person. I haven't seen it, it's not, it's tracking them at school, because when they come to school, they are under the district's care, and so the district is expected to know where those students are, if a parent calls and say, hey, I want to talk to my son so-and-so, and you say, I have no idea where he's at, you shouldn't know where he's at, you shouldn't know what class he's in, and when the student, the students go into the bathroom, they check out with the teacher and say, I'm going to the bathroom, so, now if the tracker had a camera on it, that would be totally different. I'd be, I'm, we don't have, we don't even make kids wear a lanyard with their badge now, right, or some school, a couple, a couple schools do, so, having all the kids just go to wearing badges might be kind of a difficult chore, to get compliance, doing that, and then I would ask, are we talking like elementary school kids too, like, are we talking kindergartners and first graders wearing these all day long, and I think you all know how hard a third, fourth grade boy goes at recess playing soccer or football, like, I can only imagine how many of these cards will get broken, or left out on the playgrounds, or anything like that.
It's the beauty of it, it's tracking, so you can go find it, but I don't want to spend a lot of time on it, I'll be honest with you, because I just thought about it, if it's not a good idea, we can move on, and just, maybe Ron can do it in his free time or something, come up with some cheese.
One of the things that I talked about last month when you were gone is, there are some districts, and I'm sorry, I don't remember where, but you might be able to find something in the National School Board Journal, because there have been some articles about, and I don't remember where, east coast somewhere probably, where they've been doing that, so I think there's some information out there, I just don't remember what it was.
Well, if there's, if there's litigation on it.
On the personal side, I don't. On the personal side, I don't, I don't feel like I need anybody to look into it. I think I'm good.
I'm good too, honestly. I just wanted mine, one of those mine for both ideas and let's move on.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. Last up is our WASDA positions.
All right. So thank you all. You all completed this spreadsheet and I've got a copy of the completed spreadsheet. I feel like WASDA gave a little bit different direction this year. They just said like top ten and like not really priority order. So when the board does land on their top ten, there's a little link that I can click on and put the top ten and they're not in any priority order. So I'm just saying that because I don't think you have to fuss with what's one and two or anything. But, so what I did is I took your individual responses. Mike, you did give your top twenty, so I've got to be, I'm sure it was ten, but it's okay.
Last year I did nineteen, so this year I did twenty.
So.
I gave honorable mention.
Yeah, and I didn't, I didn't include those.
And I did prioritize mine.
Oh, God, that is funny.
Everybody gave me, got, got me the information, which is great. So I was able to put it on the spreadsheet. And then what I did was highlight the areas where two or more board members indicated that was one of their top ten. So I've got that then compiled on this sheet and you can see, because there was one area, for example, funding of basic education where five people, all five people have that as a priority. And then career and technical education funding, there were three, enrollment decline, three, opposition to prejudgment interest, two, support for special education programs, two, multilingual learners, two, education and funding for gifted student programs, two, budget stability, two, attract, retain, attract, recruit and retain diverse staff, two. So there were nine areas where there was agreement, right, of two or more. And then I put on that, second page I gave you, just a little blurb from WASDA reminding you what those things are in case there was any conversation about it. So one way, you know, we could do this to say, well, you've got your top nine here, but there, I don't know what the tenth is. So you could just spend time looking at what you think ten is or however you want to do it. But do you have any questions about how, what, just the approach that I took or?
No.
Okay. So now I think it's just up to you to decide what you want to do.
There's no laughing at me, Ron. I readily admit that I just, I just defaulted back and started looking at last year's stuff and wanted to make sure I was being consistent, looking at the changes and so on.
I debated about only putting your ten, but then I'm like, well, he gave us twenty.
Yeah, exactly. So let's make him look like a knucklehead is what we're going to do. That's perfect. Thank you so much for that.
You're an overachiever.
I don't need any help with that, thank you very much. Well, that's kind of a quandary when we just don't have, and all of a sudden, again, looking at the top ten, you know, we just don't have crossover on that, on that tenth issue.
They're all good issues. I don't have any trouble with someone suggesting a tenth one. The ones that are important, I think, one through nine are just, as far as I'm concerned.
And I'm good with nine. I mean, if you send nine in, it's, it's mine.
Like, I guess it seems to me, since we only have, since we have commonality on nine.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's probably the best way for us to go.
Yep.
I think there's no reason for us to, to go try and plumb something on there unless someone has just got complete heartburn or wants to fight over one.
I like to give that, if someone would have a strong opinion on one that's not on there.
I, I do. Yeah, like my number, one of, like this local control and school district improvement, I, you know, that's something that I, I feel like that we kind of missed on the last WASDA situation and that's, anyway, it, I just, I just like to have that discussion, local control. I just want the state to have less control over us and us to have more control over us. There's always an issue I want to push back on in every regard.
What, what I can do, if it's helpful, I can bring up, I have all these and we could bring, I could bring up that full one and just get to the local control one if you want to see what it says.
Yeah.
Sure, sure. There's two local control ones and I don't think anyone really actually touches the issue that I care about, but they're both kind of.
While you're doing that, can I ask a question to maybe, I'm not sure who, opposition to prejudge, prejudgment interest, can someone explain that a little bit more to me?
Bronson probably can the best. It is on the sheet what the position says, so on that sheet, where the top nine, I copy pasted all those top nine.
Yeah.
But Bron, but Bronson, would you be able to explain that a little bit better?
Like the, I guess the benefit, like, what's the benefit of the supporting this?
I can, I'll scroll to that one, Bronson, and then it's on the O's.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to, yeah, that's what I want to understand. You can have this if you want to read the bottom here while she's scrolling.
You can see that.
Here it is.
Put your glasses on.
Do you, do you see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so what that, what that is, is in, in a lawsuit, if you're found liable in a lawsuit and you have a judgment rendered against you, what happens then is interest starts occurring on the judgment thirty days after the judgment is finalized. What this is saying is they're going to oppose any legislation that would enact interest on a judgment before the final judgment. So there could be legislation that says, hey, the act that you're liable for happened five years ago, so we are going to tack on interest starting five years ago and tack that on to the top of your, on the, in addition to the judgment and then start tacking on more interest after that. So that's what they're saying. They would oppose any legislation.
And, and some issues, right, don't have a, what's the word I'm looking for, like a statute of limitations?
That's right.
So that's the issue.
So like, for example, for example, on sex abuse cases, there is, there isn't necessarily statute of limitations because of developing case law. So you could have a sex abuse case from thirty years ago, saying, oh yeah, it happened thirty years ago, so the interest starts then. I mean, it could, yeah, could have huge effects.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bronson. And here's the local control wording, if you can read that. So it's about promoting local control over school and district improvement efforts, local control and accountability for school improvement processes and plans, and then requiring all mandated corrective action be negotiated with and implemented by the locally elected school board.
And then the other one, the other local control.
Is the sanction one.
Yeah, I, yeah, you're, yeah, neither one really, really highlights what I've, yeah, it's, it's true.
Maybe, maybe you look at proposing something next year to WASDA, work with the board and the board maybe propose something along what you're looking for. And then with the weighted vote removed, there might be a higher chance of it passing now.
So it sounds we're sticking with nine, what it feels like to me?
Yeah, yeah, or you throw in, I mean, MSOC funding had two people vote for it, state funding for co-curricular activities had two votes for it down the way, but.
Yeah, but remember, that's in Mike's twenty votes, not ten.
And one of them on MSOC was a seventeen, so that's Mike's.
I think nine is good.
That's going to provide plenty of information.
Yeah, Ron is having a great evening at my expense. Thank you. I'm so glad that I could.
Didn't you miss him last night?
I did.
No, I was doing the same thing he did.
Look at all these.
Okay, so.
Could have saved you from this, you know that's what I'm saying.
So the, I'm sorry. These are the nine I'll, I'll put in and then I will let you know when that's done. All right.
Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So we have no unfinished business, we have no new business. Next up is our next meeting agenda. We have communities and schools, Benton Franklin County, we have the Children's Reenie Foundation of Mid-Colombia and the highly capable update. Anything else we would like to see on the agenda for next, next meeting?
Yeah. Do you have it or do you want me to?
I think you were going to bring it up.
Yeah, yeah. So I'd like to add, and I don't know the numbers off the top of my head right now, update the policy, I think it's twelve forty. And then to discuss a new policy, twenty, it's a WASDA model policy, it's school legislative director, policy program, policy. We don't have it, so it's a new policy, so to discuss those two policies.
Anything else?
Those policies will be available to us before the next meeting, right?
Yes.
You'll send them?
Yes.
Okay, anything else? If not, we are going to adjourn the public session of our meeting. We're going to the executive session for approximately thirty minutes, which means it'll be forty-five. So move all the meetings to a close. Thank you very much for joining us.